Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Board of Commissioners' Public Meeting, Tuesday, September 17, 2019. The time is now 7:50. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975, notice that this meeting was published in November 29, 2018, issues of the Nutley Sun, the Herald News, and the Star Ledger. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board and a copy is on file in the Municipal Clerk's Office. Commissioner Rogers.
Here.
Commissioner Tucci.
Here.
Commissioner Evans.
Here.
Commissioner Petracca is absent, excused this evening. Mayor Scarpelli.
Here.
All present mayor except for Commissioner Petracca, he is absent, excused this evening.
This past week, Commissioner Petracca lost his mom, Victoria. I just ask everybody to have a moment of silence in her memory. Thank you.
Yes, Mayor, we have Board of Commissioner meeting minutes for August 20, 2019. I need a motion.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Stand.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
And that's it for minutes, Mayor.
Let's do correspondence, Madam Clerk.
Yes, we have two this evening. One is for the VFW Post 493. They have submitted a letter requesting permission to hold a pull tab raffle from July 1, 2019, through June 30, 2020, including all Sundays. And the Nutley Academic Booster Club has submitted an application for a social affair permit to hold their wine tasting event on October 25, 2019, from 7:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. at the Nutley Museum. I need a motion.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
And that's it for correspondence.
Let's do reports.
Mayor, I have the code enforcement report for the month of August.
Commissioner Petracca has a public safety report for the month of August and Public Works has a monthly progress reports for June, July, and August. Let's go to the little. Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Tucci.
Thank you so much. Well, ladies and gentlemen, from the chatter you've been hearing this evening while we were in the back taking care of some important business was absolutely chatter of happiness, of a group of folks and an entire town being proud of the accomplishments of what our children can do and what our adults can do when their energies are channeled properly. And this evening, I have the very high distinction, all right, of presenting this resolution. And just for everyone's edification, for the first time in the history of Little League play here in Nutley, we have a state championship team. Let's give them a round of applause. The Nutley American Little League Intermediate 57 All-Stars won the District 2 title over the Clifton Little League and then beat Chester Mendham Little League to win the Section 1 and Section 2 title. In the state championship versus Middletown Little League, Nutley swept the best-of-three series in deciding fashion, 4-0 and 13-2. Whereas this team wasn't done, for the first time in the history of Little League play in Nutley, we have a regional champion. Representing the state of New Jersey in the Eastern Regionals, Nutley overwhelmed Connecticut and Mercy ruled them 12-1. In the next round, Nutley was relentless again and Mercy ruled the team from New York. To make it to the regional final out of the winner's bracket, Nutley beat Maryland 6-3. In the regional finals, Nutley had to beat Maryland once with Maryland needing two wins. Nutley lost a close game to Maryland 4-1 that forced a rubber match. In that rubber match, Nutley was dominant and dispatched Maryland 13-3 to earn a berth in the Little League Intermediate World Series in Livermore, California. Whereas playing on ESPN Plus in front of an international audience, East Region Nutley ran into a powerhouse team from Southeast Region Alabama and fell 11-2. In an elimination game, East Region Nutley lost a heartbreaker to host team District 57, California 10-8. In the consolation game against Australia, East Region Nutley came out on top, 15-6. A great experience was had by the boys and coaches and they represented Nutley, the state of New Jersey, and the region with honor throughout the tournament. Whereas coaches Peter Breihoff and Joseph Haynes led the following boys on the successful campaign, and Nutley could not be prouder that the players were Jonathan Breihoff, Rocco Delita, Anthony DiPaolo, Miles Gomez, Joseph Haynes, Kevin Girada Prasat, Jacob Blamontico, Ryan Roque, Christopher Sarno, Eric Thompson, and Jada Velez. Whereas, this group is special because this team is a combination of the best of Nutley American and Nutley East, playing under the Nutley American Charter, and shows what a merged Nutley team can accomplish on the diamond. There will be talk of what could have been in years past, but the reality is that this team, these boys, actually accomplished something that no team has before in Nutley, and for that, they will always be legends. Congratulations to the Nutley Little League Intermediate All-Stars, District 2, Section 1 and 2, New Jersey and East Region Champions. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners, the Township of Nutley, and the County of Essex and State of New Jersey, join with the citizens of Nutley to honor and congratulate the members and coaches of the Nutley Little League Intermediate Team for their exceptional efforts and accomplishment. I so very proudly move this resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Assemblyman, would you please join us? Before I vote, I'd like you to know that what you have accomplished was not only watched
You just hope everyone realizes that I announced everyone's name last week.
and looked at by the sports world, but by a lot of people not involved in sports.
Congratulations. Okay. Good job. Congratulations. You just want to better my real life than I do.
It was an amazing, amazing feat that you made.
Now, is everyone's name reflected?
And you made your township proud, you made the state proud, and you made this nation
Congratulations. Okay. Good job.
proud.
All right.
Thank you and God bless you, and I vote yes.
Thank you. Council. Thank you.
Commissioner Tucci.
It's my side.
Aye.
The wagon was here.
Commissioner Evans.
All right. Thank you.
To everyone, congratulations.
Congratulations. All right.
I always enjoy these resolutions because it's about acknowledging and recognizing all
Congratulations. Great job. You just hope everyone realizes that I announced everyone's name last week.
of the people of Nutley, all of our residents.
Congratulations. All right.
And one of the special things about it is, is we acknowledge all of the young talent
Congratulations. Okay. Good job. Good job.
that we have.
Good job.
So I gladly, gladly vote yes.
All right. It's my side. The wagon was here.
Mayor Scarpelli.
All right.
Congratulations, guys, and the parents.
Thank you. Congratulations. All right. Congratulations.
You know, when you go through a summer with the guys you become close with, you win with
Okay. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right.
them, you lose with them, you laugh with them, and you cry with them.
Thank you. Congratulations. All right. Congratulations. Great job. You just hope everyone realizes that I announced everyone's name last week.
And this, when you look back 20, 30 years from now, you're going to remember this summer
Now, is everyone's name reflected?
and the guys that you went through that with.
Congratulations. All right.
So I proudly vote aye.
Congratulations. Okay. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Congratulations. All right. Congratulations. Great job. You just hope everyone realizes that I announced everyone's name last week. Now, is everyone's name reflected? Congratulations. All right. Congratulations. Great job. You just hope everyone realizes that I announced everyone's name last week. Now, is everyone's name reflected? Congratulations. All right. Congratulations. Great job. You just hope everyone realizes that I announced everyone's name last week. Now, is everyone's name reflected? Congratulations. All right. Congratulations. Great job. You just hope everyone realizes that I announced everyone's name last week. Now, is everyone's name reflected? Congratulations. All right. Thank you. Council. Thank you. It's my side. The wagon was here. All right. Thank you. Congratulations. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Good job. All right.[945.11]
A service to the community of Nutley. But what happens in a town like Nutley is what you saw, what you see here tonight that is such a, I guess, a strength of the town also becomes a barrier because everyone knows everyone. Judgment is something that people fear. The, uh, the whole idea of stigma where it is connected to, uh, groups like, uh, first responders, veterans, uh, you're talking about groups of people who, uh, see mental health, seeking mental health treatment as weakness. If people in their environment find out, uh, not only judgment, but it could be much more punitive and dangerous, uh, for them in terms of the, uh, the repercussions that can come from it. So there's a lot of fear. I've worked with quite a few police officers on my caseload and, uh, and they come to Nutley Family Service Bureau because almost like as if they were going to a private practitioner, they know that they have the, uh, the privacy there and the confidentiality, which we hold that so as such an important thing. But yeah, that's, that's why the whole idea of stigma free now is, uh, it's, it's something that is becoming much more, uh, of a visible thing. Uh, I was doing some research after I spoke to you on Sunday morning, uh, Mayor, and, uh, one of the things I found out was that Bergen County has sixty-nine out of seventy county, uh, towns that are stigma-free environments. You don't have to be a town, it could be a school, you could be an organization. Uh, it's, it's basically you're showing that you have a commitment to that anyone that comes into that environment is going to feel, uh, that they are welcome, uh, in terms of who they are and in terms of whatever way they may be stigmatized, that they're going to feel welcome. And it's, it involves initiatives that the town commits, that, that the organization or the town commits itself to.
I know we all have a friend who, uh, took their own life that we wish he would have gotten help.
Yeah.
Commissioners, any questions or comments?
Just one comment if I might, Mayor. You know, earlier this month, uh, there was a service for Ruth Bedford, who was one of the, uh, the chief sponsors of the Nutley Family Service Bureau. And whenever the Nutley Family Service Bureau name pops up, you have to think of Ruth because she worked for so long, so hard to promote, you know, all of the, the goals of the agency and to keep it solvent for so many years and just did so much. This was just one of the many things that she's done. All right? So I'm, I'm very happy and I'm very pleased, Joe, that you're here and Eileen and the rest of the folks that you have there to carry on in that tradition. All right? And if there's anything we can do, and I know I speak for everyone here, to help further your efforts with the Family Service Bureau, we always stand ready to help.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I really appreciate that. Commissioner Tucci.
So I, I would just, yeah, add a couple of things. One, it's a morrow dead on about Ruth, right? Just wonderful lady who was so involved and so passionate about the Nutley Family Service Bureau. So this was, I agree and I want to echo that. Uh, but you know, you guys do so much more than just mental health, right? The, and I think it's, uh, to your credit, uh, it would be important to acknowledge, you know, all the volunteers, the people that, you know, support the thrift shop, the food pantry.
Yeah.
Right? For you, that we, we were in, you know, in need to have that taking, you know, somebody take step up and take responsibility because the Red Cross was moving out of town on the food pantry and really get that under control. So just, uh, I also want to acknowledge, you know, all the great work that you're doing on the other end of this spectrum is, is that sometimes people don't need financial help, but they do need emotional stability.
Yeah.
And, you know, maybe some food, some clothing, and, and from what I see, the socializing and the acceptance that they can actually go do what they need to do, but keep their heads held high. So a lot of, a lot of respect and a lot of dignity. So I think it's important to acknowledge that, that part of what the Family Service Bureau does as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Evans. I mean, I, I really feel, uh, so supported here tonight by both Eileen and Emma, who really, I think, um, uh, in terms of what you, what you're talking about, I mean, the efforts and the, uh, blood, sweat and tears that go, that go into, into something like you're talking about when it comes to volunteers. Uh, one of the reasons that, uh, I really felt passionate about taking this role on when Felicia left, and she really was someone who, I mean, she grew the agency to position it for the success that we're having right now. And Eileen, though, is passionate about volunteers. She just is. She doesn't just see a volunteer as someone who comes and gives their time. It was, it was a commitment to the, the environment and our building at 169 become an environment that volun, if people walked in, they would see the volunteers were really having, uh, an environment that they could feel comfortable in.
Yes.
That they could do their work in, that they could be proud of. And really, I mean, volunteering is probably one of the underpinnings of our, uh, of our society, but if, I think if volunteers are treated that way, it would really entice more people to want to do it. So really, thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you for coming in.
You're welcome. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Let's, uh, we're really moving around today. We're going to go to the budget presentation. How's that?
Want to do the bill list first?
Sure.
So we don't forget it.
Bill list, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. Bill list for September seventeenth, two thousand nineteen. Public affairs, ninety-nine thousand, one hundred and eight dollars and seventy-nine cents. Revenue and finance, two million, six hundred and ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventeen dollars and seventy cents. Public safety, eighteen thousand, two hundred and seven dollars and sixty-one cents. Public works, seventy-one thousand, six hundred and twenty-four dollars and eighty-three cents. Parks and public property, thirty thousand, nine hundred and six dollars and eight cents. Water utility, three hundred and eleven thousand, thirty-two dollars and sixty-three cents. Overtime payroll, forty-two thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars and eighty-seven cents. Total payroll, eight hundred and forty-three thousand, five hundred and one dollars and forty-four cents, for a grand total of four million, seventy-two thousand, ninety-nine dollars and eight cents.
Move the bills?
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
And that's it for bills, Mayor.
Thank you. Tonight we have, uh, a few things to do regarding the, uh, budget. I am very pleased to share with you that we have been able to negotiate our transitional state aid, uh, for this year in the amount of three million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That coupled with the stated commitment of the board that said we will keep to a two percent tax increase this year, that even though the aid is lower than what we had originally asked for, which was four point one million, we have held to that commitment. So there will be no budget incre, or tax increase, uh, in, uh, other than what was originally programmed. Uh, and at the municipal level, that was a two percent increase for the year. So there'll be no adjustment of the, uh, November tax bills to account for any adjustment in, in state aid. It's been, uh, a bit of a, a little bit of a wild ride, uh, as, as you might, uh, think for a moment. We did all of the upfront work with a lot of support, uh, from Assemblyman Ralph Caputo, leading the way with Joe Di, uh, DiFincenzo, our Essex County Executive, and the full support of the Board of Commissioners. We asked for four point one million dollars worth of aid. We actually stayed at that level through the adoption of the state budget, but post-budget adoption, the governor in many areas, uh, because of reservations around our revenue stream and some changes in, in spending, uh, had quarantined categories of spending, which included the entire transitional aid pool. While that pool is still frozen, uh, by the governor, we have been, uh, involved with his office, with him directly, uh, with Ralph Caputo's help, who's here tonight, uh, and, and others, uh, to actually compel them to help us because after tonight's meeting, uh, we would not be able to, uh, continue to, uh, operate as a municipality because we would in fact run out of money. And statutorily, we can't adopt, uh, we can't, in effect, introduce another temporary budget, which would in effect approve the entire budget for the year, which we hadn't adopted. So the statutes, statutes are against us, logic was against us. So using that as a backdrop, uh, we had some very intense negotiations over the last several weeks and follow, and follow-up calls, which resulted in, uh, last evening, uh, achieving a transitional aid amount of three million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's only part of the story because this board had made a commitment early on and said we will only have a two percent increase this year. Uh, if you remember from the spring, when we introduced the, uh, the budget, it was at three point eight-five percent. So before we even looked at state aid, we had to find one point eight-five percent, uh, reduction in a fifty-something million dollar budget in order to hit that target. Uh, so with the full support of the board and their full cooperation, I want to share with you a couple of the actions that, that took place. Uh, early in the year, Commissioner Tucci, uh, had negotiated lower medical rates, uh, that had benefited us, which we, in the original introduction, we were able to, uh, reduce that cost by half a million dollars this year. Uh, he had indicated at that time that he continued to research that and just continued to do his analysis. And, and so to get to where we are tonight, he made a further, uh, reduction, which I'll let him, uh, talk about. The mayor, through the water utility, uh, we had a water utility deficit amount, uh, included in our budget, but the mayor had made a commitment to resolve that issue. And, and so getting here to tonight, that issue has been resolved, uh, in our budget. So we don't have to actually provide for that deficit. The water utility stands on its own. Uh, and the, and the mayor can, can comment on that as well. Commissioner Petracco is not here, uh, but in order to make this work, we had to reduce the public safety budget by a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do that. Uh, I didn't need to go to Steve because we didn't have to get down to pennies. His budget and mine seemed to be the smaller amounts, so I, I didn't have to get under a hundred bucks to get there. So, uh, I didn't have to get to Steve. Uh, but nonetheless, fully, fully supportive that as a board, we have to demonstrate to the community that we can live within our means. Uh, so recognizing all of that, uh, we were able to, to, uh, actually tonight, do two things. One is we will introduce and have a public hearing on a budget amendment that will reduce overall spending by approximately a million dollars. Uh, we will include the amendment for the state aid, uh, and after we do that, we will then, based upon that lower number, adopt the budget for two thousand and nineteen. Uh, and that's, that's progress. But, uh, one overall note, um, you know, the transitional state aid, uh, is something that we've been working on since two thousand and thirteen, uh, which we got our first award in two thousand and fourteen. Accumulatively, uh, since then, we have actually received, including this year, over twenty-four million dollars, uh, worth of transitional state aid, uh, which we have to, in, in, in my word, fight for every year and justify why we, why we need that money. Uh, it takes a lot of effort on the part of not just me, but, but a bunch of people, uh, to be able to do that. Uh, so I wanted to, one, uh, on behalf of the board, thank Assemblyman Ralph Caputo for all of his efforts, which go back to the beginning when we actually introduced legislation to try and protect the town from the closure of, uh, the Roche site. The most significant aspect of the transitional state aid, while it, on average, probably if you think about the ten thousand taxable units that we have in town, has saved people, everyone, probably a twenty, close to twenty-five hundred dollars since two thousand and fourteen in taxes. The most significant piece of that is, has been our ability as a governing body to focus on the long-term health and branding of the, and rebranding of the Hoffenla Roche site. You've seen the medical school, uh, get established and operate. Modern Medo is a bio, bio leather fabricator is there. And, uh, very soon, aside from Hackett's Act research, Ralph Floren will be, uh, occupying, uh, that property in, uh, October. All of that was grounded on the initial work that, uh, Commissioner Tucci and at the time Mayor Petracco did in, uh, looking at the repurposing committee and then the continuing work that, uh, Mayor Scarpelli and I have been doing since then, uh, to actually move this forward. Um, there's not one decision that's made about Hoffenla Roche, uh, or state aid that isn't, uh, done without the full backing of the Board of Commissioners. Uh, we have had that opportunity to discuss where we want to go and the, uh, aligned thinking and the alignment that's brought us to this point, uh, is a testament to the value of trust and teamwork. So, uh, with that, uh, I want to just acknowledge my commissioners and Commissioner Tucci, Mayor, if you'd like to say something, but be, go right at it.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd, I'd like to commend Commissioner Evans, all right, because he absolutely took the lead on this. And while we have five independent thinkers sitting up here, all right, when it comes to what's best for this township and how we spend our tax dollars, we are one body. All right? And I think that's important, that everyone understands that. Tom did an outstanding job. I mean, Ralph Caputo, there, there are not enough good words for me to say about Ralph Caputo. He takes on the hard fights, all right? Whether it's with people in his own party or the opposite party, he doesn't care. Ralph Caputo is about doing what's right for the town of Nutley, and Belleville's loss was absolutely Nutley's gain. So Ralph, I want to thank you for all of your efforts in making this a reality. All right? Mayor Scarpelli, Commissioner Rogers and Commissioner Petracco, who are not with us this evening, um, because of his loss, um, everyone pulled together on this, all right? And everyone went through their budgets time and time again. We had great leadership and great guidance from Tom. This is his bailiwick. Finance and numbers are his thing, all right? And he absolutely led the way. I mean, we were able to scrub out, uh, about six hundred thousand, because in addition to that half a million that we have already reduced from health benefits, we came up with another hundred thousand, all right? And we continually look at how we do things and how we ensure our people to see how we can save money, whether it's on the, the, the health insurance side or whether it's on the property and casualty side, uh, through the GIF, where our administrative costs are some of the lowest around and our payouts are even lower than that. And actually, today, we, we got a great statistic, um, at our meeting this morning, our workers' compensation cases have been reduced by fourteen percent. And while there are many different elements in insurance, that's the problem child in the, in the room always. All right? So we're even addressing that through some of the educational part. I don't want to belabor the point. I'm very pleased, uh, with all the work that was done, with everyone that helped, and everyone used their own channels, all right? Whether it was the county executive, the Assemblyman's office, the Senator's office, all right? Uh, the mayor contacting them, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Petracco, and this is what happens when everyone works together. So this is a good example for all of the other folks in the town to follow. Take our lean on this. It works.
Commissioner? Well, I certainly concur with my fellow commissioners. It certainly is a teamwork in these past seven and a half, uh, years. The one thing that I have been very proud of, and I've really made a lot of statements around this country, is the integrity of this board and the challenges that you have met. Commissioner Evans, can't say enough about you. I've said it over and over again, we're blessed to have you with the brain you have and the numbers that you've crunched. But I do have something to say to someone, this is coming from the other side of the aisle, uh, but, but I have this opportunity, I like to see some opportunities, Assemblyman. Since the day I came to Nutley, you have been one of the most terrific representatives of the people. You never let party get in the way, you never let anything get in the way of doing your job, and you've been very, very visible. So I just want to let you know that, hey, look, as a, as a, as a friend, I'm proud of you, but as a person who believes in government and good representation, you're a role model. And I thank you for helping us out with this, with a very big challenge. And I hope to, well, I was actually going to say, the press is here, I was going to say you ought to run for governor one day, but please strike that. Uh, but, 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 but I've got to tell you. Well, but you know what? Thank you so much and may God bless you as you move on in, in your career. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
I, I want to thank all the commissioners for the work they did on their budgets and especially, uh, the last couple of days in getting down a little bit further, uh, to where we had to be. Especially want to thank Commissioner Evans for his hard work and, uh, he's been daily on the phone, uh, with Trenton in various capacities to get that transitional aid. And of course, our Assemblyman Caputo, he not only helped us with the transitional aid, but we've had a myriad of, of issues that, uh, needed his help over, over the past year, and he's always been there for us. And I can't thank you enough, Ralph. Can't thank you enough. Um, you know, we were able to, uh, on the public work side, we were able to, uh, find some unaccounted water, uh, through leak detection and some other things that we've done, and that helped us reduce the, uh, budget, the operating budget of the water department, which, uh, enabled us to reduce the budget on the, the public work side because we had some money in there to cover the shortfall. So, uh, again, I thank everybody. I think, uh, Commissioner Tucci said it the best, it's a team. It's a team. And, uh, no I in team, and we work together to get it done. And, uh, appreciate all your hard work of everybody here. So Commissioner, again, thank you for your, uh, I think you were burning up the wire at Trenton.
Yeah, they, they don't want to hear from me for a little while.
Yeah, don't aggravate them.
They know me. They know me. Um, so, so we'll just move forward. Uh, I want to, uh, uh, move to, uh, our resolution, uh, which is the, uh, budget amendment. It's resolution number two-two-five-nineteen, uh, which, uh, includes a series of adjustments, as you've been hearing, to reduce the water utility deficit, to, uh, reflect the lower anticipated state aid and adjust, and adjust in other areas, including medical. Uh, well, I'm, I'm going to, uh, I think we have to open it up right now to a public hearing, um, for, for those amounts, uh, before we, we vote on the amendment.
Anybody like to be heard on the budget amendments tonight?
Move to close?
Seeing that we moved to close the public hearing?
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Whereas the local municipal budget for the year two thousand and nineteen was approved on the second day of April two thousand and nineteen, whereas the public hearing on said budget has been held as advertised, whereas it is desired to amend said approved budget now therefore be resolved by the Board of the Commissioners, uh, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, that the following amendments, as I, uh, previously, uh, mentioned, are hereby approved in the two thousand and nineteen budget. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
The second piece of business is to, we need to adopt the budget tonight. Uh, we previously held a, uh, public hearing on that budget in April, in the April timeframe. Uh, so tonight it's a matter of just adopting the budget now as amended, as amendment, as Be resolved by the governing body of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, that the budget herein, uh, before set forth is hereby adopted and shall constitute an appropriation of the purposes stated in the sums therein, set forth as appropriations and authorizations in the amount of forty million, five hundred and ninety-seven thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents for municipal purposes and one million, two hundred and seventy-five thousand, six hundred and thirteen thousand and twenty-five cents for the, uh, minimum library tax. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a budget.
Thank you, Commissioner. Let's move to public comment on agenda items only. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone, provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to three minutes. All remarks of the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the mayor. The mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board. Dialogue between citizens and others addressing the Board shall be allowed unless the mayor or presiding officer, the majority of the membership of the Board, shall determine that the interests of the forum, ends where the expeditious conduct of municipal business are being adversely affected by such dialogue.
Anybody wish to address the Board of Commissioners on agenda items only? Seeing that, let's move on to ordinance introductions. This, the, these two are Commissioner Petracco's ordinance introductions. Uh, ordinance number three-four-two-seven, an ordinance to amended ordinance codified in the code, Township of Nutley, Chapter two-two-eight, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, particularly Article Two, Section fourteen, Parking Prohibited During Certain Hours. I move this ordinance be passed to a second reading, advertised in Nutley Sun, together with the notice required by law, and that further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners be held on its second reading on...
October fifteenth.
October fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen. I move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. Ordinance number three-four-two-eight, an ordinance to amended ordinance codified in the code, Township of Nutley, Chapter two-two-eight, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, particularly Article Seven, Special Zones and Areas, Section twenty-nine-A, entitled Handicap Parking, to remove the location set forth therein. I move this ordinance be passed to a second reading, advertised in Nutley Sun, together with the notice required by law, and further consideration of said ordinance be, for final passage by the Board of Commissioners, be held at a second reading on October fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen. I move the resolution. I have the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. Commissioner Rogers, resolutions.
Okay, resolution number two-two-three-dash-nineteen. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley adopted resolution number one-seven-three-dash-nineteen on July second, two thousand and nineteen, authorizing the municipal clerk to advertise for the receipt of sealed bids for the collection, removal and disposal of solid waste, bulk waste, vegetative waste, leaves and grass clippings. And where I said resolution must be amended, in order to include an addendum dated September twelfth, two thousand and nineteen, and to correct the bid opening date and time as per the bid advertisement specifications. Now therefore be it resolved that resolution number one-seven-three-dash-nineteen is hereby amended to include an addendum dated September twelfth, two thousand and nineteen, to said bid specifications and to state that the aforementioned bids shall be publicly opened and read on October second, two thousand and nineteen, in the commission chambers, Township Hall, One Kennedy Drive, at eleven AM prevailing time. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
That's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Whereas on Sunday, October thirteenth, two thousand and nineteen, the Nutley Belleville Columbus Day and Italian Heritage Month Parade Committee will celebrate its thirty-seventh annual Columbus Day parade festivities commemorating Columbus's historic voyage to the new world. And whereas the parade committee has a long history of commemorating Columbus Day each year in the Township of Nutley, which is looked forward to and enjoyed by both spectators and participants alike. And whereas the Nutley Belleville Columbus Day and Italian Heritage Month Parade Committee will celebrate its annual honorary dinner on Wednesday, October second, two thousand and nineteen, at Nanina's in the Park. And whereas this year's grand marshal is Buddy J. Fortunato. And whereas Buddy J. Fortunato is joined by the Lifetime Achievement Award recipient, our own Gina Tambori, the Italian Heritage Award recipient, Francesca Roselli, Belleville Woman of the Year, Anna Genicelli, Belleville Man of the Year, Joseph Pizzi, Nutley Woman of the Year, Marie Salimo, Nutley Man of the Year, Joseph Tissay, two thousand and nineteen Renaissance Men, Matthew Genatempo, and our own Sal Scarpelli, two thousand and nineteen Italian Business Leaders, Dino Vitigliano and Joseph Capasso, along with Community Excellence Award recipients, Walt Smith and Karen Yaman. Now therefore be it resolved by, that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex join with the citizens of Nutley to salute and congratulate Grand Marshal Buddy J. Fortunato, Lifetime, Lifetime Achievement Award recipient Gina Tambori, Italian Heritage Award recipient Francesca Roselli, Belleville Woman of the Year, Anna Genicelli, Belleville Man of the Year, Joseph Pizzi, Nutley Woman of the Year, Marie Salimo, Nutley Man of the Year, Joseph Tissay, two Nut, two thousand and nineteen Renaissance Men, Matthew Genatempo and Sal Scarpelli, two thousand and nineteen Italian Business Leaders, Dino Vitigliano and Joseph Capasso, along with Community Excellence Award recipients Walt Smith and Karen Yaman, as they are honored here tonight. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Proudly aye. That's all I have, Mayor. Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas New Jersey State Statute fifty-four colon, four dash three dot three provides certain war veterans who have suffered serious disability while in service full tax exemption on their principal residence. Whereas Mr. John Kruk was granted a full exemption from payment of his taxes on, uh, June eleventh, two thousand, two thousand and nineteen, and, um, all subsequent years through resolution number, uh, one-seventy-seven-nineteen, uh, which was dated, uh, July second, two thousand and nineteen. dated July 2, 2019. Mr. Cruck had received a homestead rebate in error. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners that the Treasurer be and she is hereby authorized to refund the 2016 homestead rebate in the amount of $249.03, which would be applied to the fourth quarter 2019 property tax of Mr. Cruck. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
My next resolution, Number 218-19. This resolution amends the terms of the trust indenture. It connected to a million-dollar redevelopment area bond related to the Hoffa and Roche property, which was issued at the time of the medical school negotiations and the closure of that deal. This is absolutely nonrecourse that the debt is to be paid by the medical school and does not affect Nutley taxpayers. However, looking at the trust indenture, the trustee has asked for certain amendments that are administrative, which I will read. Whereas the U.S. Bank National Association, the trustee has requested certain amendments to the trust indenture to conform the definition of authorized denominations as currently defined by the trust indenture to the sinking bond payment schedule set forth in the trust indenture, which basically says how it will be paid and according to the schedule of payments. And it also says that it will allow the bondholder to receive the payment against the redemption price of the bonds without the physical presenting of actual bonds. So these are, again, administrative cleanup items. I also... It's clear that prior to this resolution, the redeveloper, the bondholder, and the trustee, which is the Prism is the redeveloper, the bondholder is Hackensack, and the trustee is National Bank, have all agreed to these changes without exception. So now therefore be resolved by the Mayor and the Township Council of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex, State of New Jersey as follows. One approves a Second Amendment to the supplemental indenture form and authorizes the township clerk to authorize and affix and attest a seal of the township to the Second Amendment indenture in substantially the same form with such changes therein as council may advise. Two, that the Township shall assist the trustee to take any and all actions required by the trustee to execute these said amendments. And three, any and all actions authorized by the officer will hereby be authorized to execute and deliver the papers and certificates that are necessary to effect these indenture amendments. All prior resolutions of the Township that are inconsistent with this resolution are repealed. The capitalized terms used in the resolution, not otherwise defined, have the meaning given to such terms in the trusted indenture, which is legal these were saying the capitalization terms haven't changed, and that this resolution takes effect immediately. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Whereas New Jersey Statute 54:4-3.3 provides war veterans who are honorably discharged from active service in the time of war in any branch of the armed services of the United States who have been or shall be declared by the United States Veterans Administration to be 100% and totally and permanently disabled, connected to their wartime service, a full tax exemption for their dwelling and the lot that it's situated on. Whereas the taxpayer... The filing taxpayer has filed an application for allowance of the full exemption with the proper supporting documentation, thus making the taxpayer eligible. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that Howard Moser be granted full exemption from payment of property taxes from June 5, 2019, and all subsequent years thereafter on the property identified as Block 1400 Lot 1, Qualifier C1003. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Just as a follow-up, I didn't read it. The Treasurer is hereby authorized to refund $3,168.50 for the 2019 property taxes. So moved as well.
Second as well.
There you go. There you go.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor.
Whereas raffle applications have been received from the following organizations: VFW Post Number 493, License Number 23-18, daily pull tab instant raffle to be held daily from July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020. Whereas the applications have been reviewed and approved by the Municipal Clerk of the Police Department, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the aforementioned licenses are approved, the Municipal Clerk is authorized to issue the rightful licenses. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. Whereas an application has been filed by John Gru LLC for a person-to-person transfer of an inactive pocket plenary retail consumption license, Number 071633019006, heretofore issued to Joe Cott Inc. And now therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, does hereby approve effective September 17, 2019, the transfer of the fore-said plenary retail consumption license to John Gru LLC, and does hereby direct the Municipal Clerk to endorse the license certificate to the new ownership as follows. This license, subject to all its terms and conditions, is hereby transferred to John Gru LLC effective September 17, 2019. I move the resolution. Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Whereas the Polgy New Jersey LLC, 60 Union Street, Newark, New Jersey, has been awarded
a non-fair and open contract as a professional services pursuant to provisions of NJSA 19 Code 44A-20.4 or 20.5 is appropriate to provide professional planning services primarily related to the ongoing redevelopment of Hoffa and Roche and Chickolini properties in the Township of Nutley on September 4, 2018 by Resolution 196-18. And whereas services have exceeded the original contracted amount of $50,000, and whereas Mayor Scarpelli, on behalf of the Commissioners, has recommended the following change order from said contract. Change order number one, provide professional services primarily related to the ongoing redevelopment of Hoffa and Roche and Chickolini properties attached to Nutley in the amount of $23,000, whereas funds are available from account number T15909918, Prism Escrow account, and has been certified by the Chief Financial Officer. Said certification be attached to this resolution. And whereas the resolution also authorizes funds to be available from account T1590918 for the entire contract. Said certification be attached to this resolution. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that change order number one, in the amount of $23,000, be and is hereby approved. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Commissioner Announcements? Commissioners, any announcements?
You want to go first?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'll start this off this evening. On Sunday, September 29, from 11:00 in the morning till 4:00 in the afternoon, we will be holding our festival in the park. We will have many vendors there. It's an outrageous event. It's an enjoyable day. Hopefully, the weather is going to cooperate with us, and everyone's going to have an outstanding time. I'd be remiss if I didn't congratulate both Mayor Scarpelli and our town attorney, Alan Genatempo, on both of their sons being named 2019 Renaissance Men by the Nutley Belvel Columbus Day Parade Committee. You gentlemen did an outstanding job. I know Sal's here. Sal, congratulations again. We're very proud of you. That's all I have there.
Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple things. One, September 24 is National Voter Registration Day. I wanted to just echo that anyone who hasn't registered to vote, please take advantage of the opportunity to vote. The Municipal Clerk's office here at Town Hall is always there to help anyone who has any questions in processing their application or what's necessary in order to process their application for voter registration. The last day for registration for voters is October 15. So the Municipal Clerk's office will be open until 9:00 p.m. that evening to accommodate anyone who has a need to register at that time. The second thing I wanted to share is that, again, teamwork is always important, right? So we initially did this this summer where we've had the Division of Motor Vehicles' mobile unit come to Nutley, where residents were able to take advantage of services to update their driver's license. They were able to redeem license plates and a host of other things. Because of the popularity of it and the demand that we saw, we will actually have the mobile unit back here in town on Friday, October 11, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. We, once again, with the support of Commissioner Tucci, will be using the municipal lot down on Park Avenue. Commissioner Petracco will be providing our necessary public safety support for that as well. What's really big about this is that the new... There's a new service that they're going to provide in that if your vehicle needs to be inspected and you're within 60 days of the new inspection, the renewal, you'll be able to inspect your vehicle down on Park Avenue on October 11 between 10 and 2:00 p.m. So it's a great program, a great success. Originally, our Municipal Clerk did the research on this. She stayed with and dogged the state again to make sure that they came back. So I want to thank Lenny for the work that she did on that, but they will be here on the 11th. I have one thing that I will share. We'll say more about this in the next meeting or so. As you know, this town has fought hard to control affordable housing. We were initially informed that Fairshire Housing was looking for 550 units to be established in Nutley. We successfully fought that, and there's only 55 that will be required, and they will be on the Roche site. Part of that program is a housing rehab program where eligible homeowners who have a need for certain significant repairs on their property can actually have those repairs done by securing an interest-free loan from the current co-trust. The trust has about $600,000 in it right now, and we're going to make that available through a process of application where we will award grants... Actually, loans, interest-free loans, for up to about $12,000. What's important about it is it's a very simple thing. If you stay in your house for 10 years, the loan is forgiven. So there's no interest, and the loan is forgiven. So it's a real opportunity to help residents in town. We have been able to do some other things. Sessi Tre Montana has been involved with this as our housing liaison. We've been working with the county to couple our program with the county housing program, which offers interest-free loans up to $25,000. They have agreed to administer the program, and we can couple it. So homeowners will now have the ability to actually apply for loans that could be forgiven at the end of 10 years, up to $35,000. So we're in the process of getting that together. We'll be sharing more about that in the coming weeks, but that's going to be the next step. And it's important news that the developer fees, the money that we've been collecting from developers and people who have been improving their property, those fees now are going to be returned to taxpayers in the form of these interest-free loans to help important aspects of their property. Included in that is the ability for eligible property owners to replace their lead water line, service line from their house to the street. So is there more to come on that? That's coming.
Thank you, Commissioner. Just to dovetail on Commissioner Tucci's Fall Festival, we're moving the farmer's market that day, that day only. That Sunday, September 29, the farmer's market will be located in the park, and that's to take advantage of all the people visiting the Fall Fest. So, thank you, Commissioner.
My pleasure.
That concludes the business portion of the meeting. Anybody wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening? Madam Cork?
Yes, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to five minutes. All remarks of the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the Mayor. The Mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board. Dialogue between citizens and others addressing the Board shall be allowed unless the Mayor or presiding officer or the majority of the membership of the Board shall determine that the interests of the quorum and/or the expeditious conduct of municipal business are being adversely affected by such dialogue.
Anybody wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Chris Clary, 115 George Avenue. I just have a couple of questions regarding the redevelopment of the Roche site. With Ralph Loren moving in, do we have an approximate percentage of tax revenues that we've... Basically, what we lost versus what we're now going to be taking in with the redevelopment? And then also, is there any additional projects being planned at this time?
Mayor, can I take that?
Yeah.
So, the occupancy of the property by Ralph Loren basically occupies what was formerly an empty building. So included in our tax base right now is taxes associated with that property of $4.1 million. So Ralph Loren's taxes are part of the current $4.1 million on the property. It is a pilot agreement. It does... But the pilot terms are very specific in that, one, they pay full local taxation. It's annually adjusted at 2%, and they pay a 2% annual administrative fee to the township, which basically gives us about 4% coverage each year to sustain that. They... You might hear about pilots where people say pilots don't pay the school tax. The pilot agreements in Nutley include the school tax. So to your point is, the money that they're paying is already coming... Is already being paid in taxes, so as them occupying the building, there won't be an incremental new tax.
So versus what we were getting when Roche was occupying the property, approximately what percentage are we expecting of that? What Roche is paying are we anticipating at this point?
So, when Roche announced their closure, they were paying us about $10 million in tax. Today, it's $4.1 million, as I just said. The determination of how much that number will rise, right, is dependent upon what the future uses of the site will be. And as it does at this time, and at this point, there hasn't been any agreement as to what those future uses might include, because we're in... We have to go through that redevelopment planning, and that's still in front of us.
And is the school, the Seating Hall, are they exempt from?
No. Interesting twist of the law. Because the medical partnership between Seating Hall and Hackensack, they didn't purchase the building directly. They're leasing the building, which in effect makes it a taxable entity. So they are... On a similar basis, they are paying a tax to us. The biggest point of consideration, though, is that where there used to be some massive buildings that we did collect taxes on, today that's parking lot for the school, which is now... Will be undeveloped land. So there will be some exposure, depending upon which direction that we go into. What's important about that, that's why the transitional aid has been so important, because it's been bridging the gap.
Yeah, it's just, no, that's never... That's not going to last forever, so.
Well, it's $24 million so far and counting, so let's keep it going.
Yep. And in regards to any additional plans of redevelopment on that site, is there anything going?
We're still in negotiation with the developer.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening? Seeing then, wish to adjourn?
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans. Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Time is 8:59.
Good night, everybody.